Right, who's need to read your sign?
Yes, I was on the.
Okay, that's.
The standard in there.
Yeah, I just wanted to.
We have one thing. Hotel is our. Right, so she's with the. What she's. The. Yeah. About, so she has. Medical. And then so the five. Side of. So she gets her all. That's. For us, so things. So we can't hear. And she's going out. Her. She's nice to. To. Quota. I mean, I think other. Person that used to be. So. And she know I don't. She kind of like. Go with some. Something. You. Just give it stop learning your. Right. And that's almost. Something. See. Always. Okay. The. Right. So. Okay. They really actually don't like. So. They're not. So that's about. You know. She doesn't. You don't. Those. Right. And you see. Let's put them on marks in there. Actually, it's. Same. But only. Basically. Still. Yeah. Okay. So. In. Ever fears what constant. Something is happening. Yeah. It's. The. We. Just. Something. I'm. Making sense. So. This is. He was. Oh, ten months. Yeah. I was not. In a day. So. It's. Okay. No. It's. It could. Right. Yeah. But. Very. Good. You do this. So. The. Power. I like. That. Power. Number. Right. He. Oh, each. Sure. Guys. How. I. You get it. No. Man. The. Sure. Um. With. Why. Do. That's. What. It's. Funny. Yeah. Oh, it's. There. I like. Oh. No. 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 Oh. No. I mean, we. Yeah. I can ask you once. We. Don't. Have. The. Maybe. It's. 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 He's. He's. That's. Oh. That's what we. Talk. About. He. All right. Fellas. It is seven thirty. This meeting will be called order if you'll abstain. What would. Psych. Pledge of. You just. What. We. Just. Like. I. I'm. Just. Stay. Right. To. The. For. Each. To. Hands. One nation. Under. God. Indivisible. Egregious. Justice. Pro. Really. A. Vol. Face. Uh. Trustee Hoff.
Hmm. Here.
Trustee Schatzberger. Here. Trustee Diatley.
Here.
Trustee McGuire.
Here.
Trustee Connolly.
Here.
Fun. Yes. Uh. Folks, we have a request to. Attend remotely by. Trustee Kelly Thomas due to a family emergency. Can I get a motion to approve allowing her to. Attend remotely by electronic means? I can just set out.
So.
Second.
Moved by Diatley, seconded by McGuire. This is. Any comments, questions, discussion? All right. Uh. Roll call note, please. Uh. Trustee Hoff.
Aye.
Trustee Diatley.
Aye.
Trustee Connolly.
Aye.
Trustee Schatzberger.
Aye.
Trustee McGuire.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh. All. All ayes. Motion passes. Welcome, trustee Thomas.
Thank you.
All right. Uh. Moving on to item number four minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes from. July. Twenty first.
Motion.
Moved by Schatzberger. Do I have a second?
Again.
Seconded by McGuire. Uh. Any comments, questions, or discussion with respect to the minutes? Right? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? No opposed. Motion passes. Yep. All right. Um. We're moving on to the president report. First, we'll have the civility pledge. I've asked trustee Schatzberger to read the civility pledge tonight.
In the interest of civility, I pledge to promote civility by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community. And understand that we each may have different ideas for achieving that objective.
Thank you. All right. Um. Uh. As for president's report, there was not too much. Uh. We did have a water main this past week, so I resumed some of the water in the sewage. Trustee rolls with. Trustee McGuire, and. We notified people on Facebook about that. Kyle, thank you to you and the crew for taking care of that and. Uh. Getting those pecks fixed right away. Um. Let's see. We had a meeting with the neighbors who were directly affected by sixteen oh one West Main Street last week. It was administrator Van, myself, and trustee Thomas. And there are three residents, three neighbors there, and. First, I'd just like to thank them. I think both are Kelly, Eugene, and myself all came out of it feeling very. Encouraged by the constructive dialogue and just that we got a chance for them to share their feelings about what was going on, us to be able to explain more of the circumstances. And knowing that. There wasn't really an outcome that we could come to, but everybody understands all of the information now and. Uh. We're just going to keep trying to move forward one day at a time. Uh. So thank you very much to each of them. I know it took a lot of patience and grace, so thank you. Um. I had an interesting discussion, and it's something I've been thinking on myself, so we won't do it immediately tonight, but I'd like some feedback from the trustees as we move forward. Uh. When we first, when I first started this administration, I liked the idea of having second chairs trustees for each of the committees. To me, it seemed that it was going to be a way to help you guys communicate and get. And pair people off, so there's more interacting. Interacting between the trustees. I am concerned now that we've all completed our open meetings act and FOIA training that it's going to be too cumbersome. Uh. We've already started kind of addressing that with trustee Connolly. Roads and parks can sometimes overlap with the environment, but it can also overlap with police safety. So I think having, and then also trustee Hoff. It's focusing on finances, but we also want to take a look at the specific areas, so we'd like to have some flexibility there. So. My. Impression is I'm going to remove the second chairs, but I also don't want to make. Make a sudden change without consulting you guys, so. We can have discussion now, or we can also. Discuss or kind of consider it and then. Make a discussion and. Actually, we could discussion. We would just do it at the next meeting. Um. Additionally, um. Actually, following up on that, because of the conflict of. Trustee Schatzberger, trustee Connolly, and myself, we'd be violating open meetings act. If we met with all of the residents on Sleepy Hollow Road to discuss the tree trimmings. So as much as I would like to participate on it directly, I'm going to actually delegate that to trustees Schatzberger, Schatzberger and Connolly. For you two to meet with the residents that you've been meeting with, as well as kind of start coming up with the tree trimming ideas for the tree advisory board. And then you guys will be working, you guys can. Address Eugene with that, can update him, and then we'll be able to bring that to the board and get a plan in place for moving forward. I think it makes more sense with you in your responsibilities with the parks. And then you with environment to be able to. Work together on that. I don't think we should interfere and have too many cooks in the kitchen.
Do we have a tree advisory board?
Uh. Yes, we technically do. It is a part of, it is actually the board of trustees. Uh. It's in the ordinance. It's under, it has its own little designation after the PCC Commission.
Section six eight seven.
Six eight seven. Um. And it's just, it was only utilized probably ten or twelve years ago, I think. Predominantly, and then we haven't used it much lately, so. Part of the roles on that are for each of us board members. And then it helps dictate what the tree pruning can be, what trees should be encouraged in the village. All sorts of things. And it may be something that we could look at with that draft ordinance with respect to the pleasure driveway. Uh. Fixing that all up. Moving on. Um. So actually, so for the, you two, if you would please reach out to. The residents, and then you can set up around some kind of a meeting to start getting some ideas.
That's.
Uh. Just so. Trustee Schatzberger, trustee Connolly are aware, I plan on trimming Sleepy Hollow Road this fall. We have trimmed it back. It's impeding on some of the signs. And the police department's asked me to do so too, so. Just so you guys have that, you know that's coming within. I'd say two and a half months or so.
Correct. Um. And actually, that will go hand in hand with the, then the trimming, some of the clearing of some of the invasives on Sleepy Hollow Road, because usually you want to do that. In the fall, because then once you cut them and you apply some of the herbicide for the more aggressive invasives. It goes down into the roots with the fall structure as opposed to doing it in the spring. So let's see if we can't coordinate that all. Maybe it'll be less work for you guys too.
Okay.
Um. Let's see. I wanted to thank Eugene and Barb. Uh. We had some residents here who have had a very difficult time with one of their neighbors. I'm not going to give more information than that for their own privacy. They came to trustees, they've come to me, they've tried looking at all sorts of different options, and. I just appreciated Eugene from your law enforcement experience, you were able to offer some really unique insight into. The feasibility of some of the ideas, and I think that saved everybody a lot of time and trouble. And then Barb, your creative landscaping ideas, they were really happy with that solution. So that's exactly the kind of stuff that I'm excited for us to look for. Use our unique experiences to find some solutions that are going to cost the residents a lot of money and still helps solve the problem. So thank you, guys. Um. Uh. Bill Connolly and chief and Steve Diatley, sorry. Trustee Connolly, trustee Diatley and chief. Uh. I know you guys had a meeting recently, or some of you did, about school, uh, road safety. And there were some ideas that you wanted to implement and maybe purchase. I just got an email today from Metro West, the IDOT, their Safe Routes to School Grant application just opened and is good until October fifteenth. Up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um. And it's to improve safety and reduce traffic around school areas. Projects could include traffic calming reduction measures, which I thought might go with yours. Bike facilities. Improve, and improvements that increase accessibility. So I just got that in the email. I will send it to Jen, to clerk Ray, so she can forward it to you guys, and there's a link that you can take a look at that. So I don't want to say anything that might come about with your plans. Lastly, this is more for everybody on the residence. Uh. There's a few public things coming up. Nikor Public Forum. Uh. They are, it's a public hearing for their proposed rate increases for Nikor Energy. The first one is going to be this Thursday, August seventh. From seven till nine thirty PM at the Hammond's Auditorium in Elgin. If you have questions, concerns, or arguments against or for, you can submit them and the. At all, we'll post the website. Uh. But you can submit your, your requests, and then the attorney or whomever's, the adjudicator will handle the question and answer session. But Nikor is increasing their, or proposing to increase their rates, and there'll be two hearings for this, so that's the first one. Now, more fun than. That's necessary one. Um. There's also a bunch of events coming up this week. I know we're towards the tail end of summer, so there's a lot of free activities, people just before school comes out, the school starts. Tomorrow evening from five until eight is National Night Out. That's going to be at Carpenter Park. Uh. Carpentersville, Eastundy, Westundy, Ark, all, everybody's involved in it. I'd love to see more neighbors out. I wasn't able to make it last year. I'm looking forward to getting over there tomorrow. Uh. Then on Thursday, our other neighbors over in Hampshire, they're having their fortieth annual. Coon Creek Country Days, which is just a lot of fun and good times, and that's up in Hampshire over the weekend. Carpenter'sville is hosting a movie in the park back over Carpenter Park on August eighth. For the Wild Robot at Dus. And then the city of Elgin has its End of the Summer Bash, which I know a bunch of parents who's taken their kids before. This one's a dinosaur themed one, and they said it's just a really great time for the kids before school starts. So just wanted to let you guys know about some of the things that came up in the emails.
Courtney.
Yes, sir.
President. Uh. What is the time for the National Night Out?
Uh. Some six.
Five.
Five to eight.
Five.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. And that is, I'm sure there's more I can report on, but that's all I'm going to report now, so. Uh. Clerk's report, please.
Uh. Number. Thank you.
Uh. Oh. How are the OMA, OMA and FOIA trainings? Everybody done?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for completing that. I know as return trustees. Trustee Diatley and McGuire didn't have to do it, but I appreciate that everybody went into the training, so we are all caught up and on the same page with it. If you have any questions, I know it can be a little confusing at times, but please. Reach out and main thing is, if there's more than two of you. Figure out if you're talking village business and step away, please. No more than two people at a time.
How often is the training required? Is it every year?
Uh. So it's every year, the, it's the first year you take office. And then, I'm sorry, it's weird that you take office on a repeat cycle. It's not annual.
Thank you.
Yeah. Statement of economic interest is.
And. Agreed.
On for that.
There.
All right. Um. Planning and zoning commissioner report, Barb.
This, we're meeting next Monday.
Next meeting.
That's scheduled. Thank you.
Uh. Attorney report?
No report.
Thank you. Engineer report?
Uh. The only thing I got is an update on the street program. Uh. We received signed contracts, kind of from IDOT. Uh. Reached out to the contractor on setting up pre-con, so once I hear that, I will let everybody know.
Thank you. And I emailed you guys earlier today. We will also be speaking to MetroNet this week, so we'll talk to you about that in.
Yep.
Uh. Director of Finance report, please.
Request a motion for the approval of the accounts payables in the amount of one hundred and two thousand, five hundred and twenty one dollars and seventy two cents.
That motion?
So moved Diatley second.
Moved by Diatley, seconded by Hoff. To approve the accounts payable in amount of one hundred and two thousand, five hundred and twenty one dollars and seventy two cents. Do I have any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Uh. Trustee McGuire.
Aye.
Trustee Schatzberger.
Aye.
It's. For. Which. Yes. Uh. Trustee, uh, Thomas.
Aye.
Trustee Connolly.
Aye.
Trustee Diatley.
Aye.
And trustee Hoff.
Aye.
All affirmative. Motion passes. Thank you.
Um. We received a nice card from, um. Upon the passing of, of, of Bill Detner, we had sent a donation, and they said to the village of Sleepy Hollow, thank you for your generous donation made in the memory of William Detner. What a beautiful way to honor his life and legacy. Your gift helps us continue to serve adopted families, bring children home to their forever families. And remind widows that they are seen and deeply loved by God. Our team is continuing to keep our breath and the family in our prayers. Your donation helps carry forward the work he champions so faithfully. Thank you, and God bless. And for both hands team.
Thank you.
Um. The soccer training, soccer referee training, they, they've asked to change the date for eight, nine, eight, six, two. Due to the, uh, the organization. Due to the, uh, the organization trying to get everything all together.
Do we have any conflicts of also?
There shouldn't be a problem.
Do we need a motion for that one?
It was approved by.
It was approved last, yeah, last time.
All right, uh. Can I have a motion, uh, to. Approve the use of the soccer field on August sixteenth instead of the ninth for the referee training session. Moved by Cannelli, seconded by Schatzberger. Any comments, questions, discussion? All those in favor say aye. As opposed. All in the affirmative, motion passes. Oh, we're probably through somebody online. We were just testing that. Uh, so if I get a roll call vote, please. Trustee Thomas?
Hi.
Trustee Cannelli?
Hi.
Trustee McGuire?
Hi.
Trustee Diatley?
Hi.
Trustee Hoff?
Hi.
Trustee Schatzberger?
Hi.
All affirmative, motion passes. You just double check, we, making sure we're, we're ready on so far.
We did, we did one on their.
Accounts payment was by a roll call.
The minutes we're going to.
The minutes. Uh, can I get? Who, who moved to? Uh, trustee Schatzberger, seconded by trustee McGuire. All right, folks, we're going to go back to the board meeting minutes approval. Uh, moved by Schatzberger, seconded by McGuire. Can I get a roll call vote, please? Trustee Hoff?
Hi.
Trustee Diatley?
Hi.
Trustee Cannelli?
Hi.
Trustee Thomas?
Hi.
Trustee Schatzberger?
Hi.
Trustee McGuire?
Hi.
All affirmative, motion passes. Thank you, folks.
Um, Rutland, uh, Dundee Fire District would like to have an open house and we would like to use our soccer field. You know, normally we charge a security deposit with a few to use that I, um, pretty much that we made this fee for their, their usage of the. The field. As a sister governmental agency.
Can I have a motion from any of the trustees to waive the. Rental fee for the soccer field on October fourth for the Dundee, Dundee Rutland Fire Department's open house.
So, but the, the security deposit too.
It's, it's, it's just in sure, I think, we know the area afterward and, uh, I don't think the government not giving it back.
So we're still doing.
Raising the fee and.
That's what I was asking.
Okay. All right, so a motion to waive both, and I heard trustee Cannelli?
Yes.
And I second.
Right, uh, moved by Cannelli, seconded by McGuire. Any comments, questions, discussion? That's for the waiver and the fee. I'm sorry, for the.
Waive the fee.
The deposit and the fee, thank you. Uh, trustee Hoff?
Hi.
Trustee Thomas?
Hi.
Trustee Schatzberger?
Hi.
Trustee Diatley?
Hi.
Trustee McGuire?
Hi.
Trustee Cannelli?
Hi.
All affirmative, motion passes.
Um, with, uh, Sergeant Wilson, uh, retiring, um, it leaves a vacancy as a FOIA officer in the police department. And we're now starting to get requests for body cam, video and stuff like that. Um, we request that Melissa be designated as a FOIA officer at, she takes the training, so she could help with the police side and. The, uh, the administrative side.
All right. Melissa, what's her last name?
Paul.
Paul. Uh, can I have a motion to appoint Melissa Powell upon sort of training? To designate her as the FOIA officer for the police, City Hall Police Department.
So it's going to be a FOIA officer.
For the village.
For the village.
Yeah, so will be at least.
Moved by Diatley, do I have a second? Seconded by Schatzberger. Any comments, questions, or discussion?
We have to do it right now.
I do it, um, every once in a while. Darren does it, but rarely. And, um, Sam and.
Myself and Becky Freeman, um, as, as example, we spent, uh, Teddy and Becky spent four hours. Uh, working on FOIAs for body cams. For one case. So, yeah, it, it's getting to a point where we're going to need backup and additional help for sure. So.
And this is for, uh, the body cameras only?
Well, this for body cams and car videos, FOIAs for records for the village. The, the unique skill that Melissa brings to the table is that she's got experience on both sides. Which helps tremendously.
And there are fees for this.
No, there's no.
Usually not.
We just did our training, the trust.
I know, but they're hard fees.
So you can have, you can have fees, uh, you can't charge people for receiving the copies of their information. And if there's a flash drive, which we voted on once for, I'd say that, I think it's five dollars, ten dollars, just to pay for the actual mechanism. But the time, you can't charge that. In fact, even for large voluminous ones, you can't charge for the first eight hours of just doing the research to look for it.
Yes, it is.
We like, we like freedom of information. All right, uh, so we have a motion on the table. Are there any other questions, comments, or discussion?
Yeah, my own theory would be that Melissa's part-time, it sounds like is quite a bit of. Hours.
We have full-time, we have full-time people dedicated to it as well. And Melissa would be a backup if.
It wouldn't be just on her shoulder.
No, 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 that's okay.
The two other FOIA agents are Chief and then Becky, who answers quad common as a front desk. And then Sergeant Wilson was the other one, so they're just having, obtaining a third.
Okay.
They're on five days for this, but. Which helps.
Yeah, and it helps if, if, if Becky goes on vacation for whatever reason. A lot of times Melissa will fill those hours when she's gone, um, and then we've got somebody to answer the FOIAs.
All right, uh, no further discussion. Roll call vote, please. Trustee McGuire?
Hi.
Trustee Hoff?
Hi.
Trustee Cannelli?
Hi.
Trustee Thomas?
Hi.
Trustee Diatley?
Hi.
Trustee Schatzberger?
Hi.
All affirmative, no negative, motion passes. Thank you, folks.
Um, my last item is I just wanted to remind everybody, we still have four, um, homes on the flat rate for the sewers. And, you know, that, that time is ticking. And, um.
Uh, trustee.
Wes, he is anxious to get this taken care of.
Why not? Trustee McGuire, you and Eugene set up a meeting to discuss the flat rate thing. I had discussions with Billy, with. One of the residents before, as well as another one, you have to talk to him, we can figure out a way to get them on board with this. I think it's the requirements by two thousand twenty, end of twenty-six.
Yeah, I, I, we, we had a couple of years, but, but we, as a board, had committed to having it done last year. When Melissa bought.
I did not get. Trustee McGuire on this one. All right, thank you. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
All right, so for the flat rates, please, Barbara. Okay. Uh, we are on to comments from the public. Uh, we have had a few comments, but things being handed out at prior meetings. I would just, I'm moving forward, I'd like to ask that if you have handouts, please give them to the clerk prior to the meeting so that they can then hand them out. That way, there's no weirdness with the time and distractions. So I think we did have some handouts. Do you really get them? Okay. All right, in that case, um, our speaker is Pete Vernon, please.
I'm not looking for a future in politics. The media tells us first hundred days of a new administration is indicative of how the rest of the term will be. Help in this case to wrong. We're now officially ninety-one days into the new administration. I did have the opportunity to meet with President Bo last week during her regular hours. During the meeting, I was informed that certain members of the board, no names mentioned. Took offense to my occasional distribution of information for their use, as well as, uh, some of my remarks were occasionally regarded as. Are you speaking to us like we are children and don't you think we can do a Google search and find this information ourselves? If offense was taken, it was not intended. But. I'm also aware that life happens and with only two days to prepare for after seeing an agenda, not everything on the agenda is necessarily. Continued from the previous meeting. You may or may not have time to grab up information. I can't speak to how long before a meeting the trustees get their packets. Indeed. The public has no knowledge of packet contents or when they're delivered. And there, there is no way of determining the accuracy and completeness of packet information. And I reminded of at least one specific instance where the board received documentation literally minutes before a board. Uh, meeting. As I recall, this was the first special use permit application. That was arguably and appropriately approved for sixteen oh one West Main. In that particular case, one trustee. Question, are we voting on this? On the packet or on what you just handed out? And then I would explain, oh, well. That's just a consolidation of documents in there. It's, it's the same thing. A lot of all about any of you. Personally, I don't sign off on anything I haven't personally read and verified. Things get lost in translation and transcription. Well. Be advised, I'm going to continue to hand out information. I will, as you have requested. Hand it off to clerk Reed, who distributed prior to the meeting. I have absolutely no problem with that. But I'm going to keep doing it because to address issues in the village, whether it is on or off. The agenda. This board was elected on based on promises of change. Transparency and an end to business as usual. I know for a fact we have serious talent on this board that's anxious to kick it in gear. I want to see it too. But it already appears their hands are getting tied with it. Observe and report as business as usual. The whole idea of a liaison is someone doing legwork, collecting the ideas and information, then suggesting solutions. That doesn't mean making deals. But it could require talking to our contracted consultants. And does include keeping eyes open for a deal that is in the best interest of the village. Regarding the issue of resolution, issue RFP hiring assistance for ICCI. I point out that as recently as two years ago, ICCI was subcontracting to inspectors coming in from Rockford. Uh, when Barbara could not, uh, could not meet her scheduled duties. I don't believe it worked well then. I don't think it's going to work now. If I sound agitated tonight, it's because I am, though. I don't want to see any more of the business as usual. Residents have had to suck it up for too many years.
Thank you. If I could just clarify, those are my words, not the trustees' words when we were speaking in the meeting.
I didn't say which, I'm sorry, I didn't remember which trustee. That's why I said a trustee.
Appreciate. I just didn't want anybody to think this version's forecast on them, so. All right, uh, Deb Vernon?
Yes. Hello, I'm Deb Vernon, H twenty-one Love's Drive. My husband Pete and I, twenty-three-year residents and homeowners. Retired local accountant, local government, bachelor degree, and I knew sixteen years employed Illinois, born in Wisconsin. Pete has fifteen years, fifty years experience in engineering and construction with the last twenty-five on regulatory compliance. I'm going to read an email that we sent to the Sleepy Hollow Village Board Clerk and Administrator on eight, one, twenty-five. I also posted this email on the two Facebook pages for Sleepy Hollow, friends and residents the same day. The email reads, we understand this topic may be included in the agenda for executive session at the eight, four, twenty-five board meeting. And would request the attached comments to be included in the discussion. The board has recently been in discussion regarding ICC relationship, ICCI's relationship with the village. ICCI has been contracted building and zoning services for Sleepy Hollow since about two thousand and six. Beginning with the Spring Hill metal commercial development. Now the board is being asked to consider hiring assistance that would report to Barbara Detmer. Performing the duties assigned to ICCI. Barbara cannot, if Barbara cannot perform the duties prescribed by the village ordinances, then it's time to replace her with a new service. We only have an estimated two hundred billing permits a year and residents are already upset with the cost of the permits in the village. It seems adding assistance is unnecessary and the cost would be prohibited. We have had other residents tell us repeatedly they had found Barbara to be rude, kind of descending, generally unprofessional in dealing with the residents. We had to get a roof repair. It was a small roof repair. It was an agreement to put a miscellaneous permit fee instead of a full roof repair. Because it was only one small area. Sold our approximate timeframe for the repair. Response was just keep me informed. When the contractor arrived, we tried calling her number, went straight to voicemail. So it was said, wouldn't be available all week. We directed the contractor to pursue as more rain was forecast. Photographs were taken throughout the repair process and immediately mailed, we mailed to her. We were then told we would be charged double because we proceeded without a permit. But we felt this was completely unreasonable. We went ahead and paid the additional cost just to make it go away. Another issue. There was less than timely submission of documents to the P and Z Commission. Sixteen oh one West Main Street. It appeared the commission received documents less than seventy-two hours. There was a lack of enforcement when the owner of sixteen oh one Main violated the requirements of the Donaerto Special Use. Another issue, updating our code of ordinances. This has been going on for at least a couple of years, and the only changes we noticed. Was that expedited approval to make self-storage facility an approved special use. Next issue, July twenty seventeen. It was suggested that then trustee Fadula obtained quotes from other companies comparable in services to ICCI. And present these results to the board. No further public records showed anything in the archived minutes. These examples of the level of service of the village received over the past years clearly demonstrate a change to, change, a need to change services. Several options available to the village, including Kent County, for private firms as safe built in HR Green. The board must make the hard call. First and foremost, what is in the best interest of the village? Respectfully, Pete and Deb Vernon. In my opinion, the board needs to get bids out for companies to provide full service building and zoning services. Review these quotes and make the best decision for price and quality service. Then the contract with Barbara Detmer needs to be terminated. The new service can certainly take care of our low-volume building permits approximately two hundred or less a year and help Sleepy Hollow improve. It'd be better. It is best practices for local government to review all outside service contracts regularly and make changes. Approximately every two to five years. This has not been done with Sleepy Hollow in the past, and that is why we are in this situation. There have been many comments from residents from the recent Facebook post regarding Barbara Detmer. On the last two several board meetings. Comments from residents again and again are poor service. High permit fees, contractors have difficulty working with Barbara. Time is now to make a change. Yes, it is time to make a change for the future betterment of Sleepy Hollow and the residents. This is not personal, but business. Decision for the best alternative to approve, to improve Sleepy Hollow. The village cannot keep making the same poor decisions for the future as they have in the past. Make a change for the better, not continue in the same old path. Just to keep things the way that they are and do nothing. Be better, Sleepy Hollow. I hope you consider this. Thank you.
Yes. All right, um, Jeff Train.
Nothing to add, um. Frankly, I lived in the village for thirty-four years and, uh, it's my first village board meeting. Very active in the Sleepy Hollow Service Club over the years and. Um, just wanted to come down and watch a village board meeting and see, uh, what are the kind of issues that we. You know, tackle down here. I came down a number of years ago to one and it was sort of. Felt like I was bothering people. What are you doing? So I left. But, um, it's, it's always an interesting process, government, uh. I know Courtney, she was a great friend of my daughter growing up as kids, so, um, her father did well as well, so. Um. An observation, um, I hear people complaining about how this place used to respond. And it seems that some people have some complaints about how sped up or how quick that was. And I think I also heard homeless people running and read what you guys wrote about, about yourselves, that want to change things. One more time, homeless are both with the, keep working on that change.
Thank you, Jeff. Good to see you. All right, next we have Jean Tanhauser. Any other questions?
Well, I am reading this for a resident.
This is the handout that we have?
We had, yes, who had an emergency and that, that's, we've been not, not aware of it. So you all are aware. Um. Everyone, there is a village meeting tomorrow at seven thirty about our village inspector Barbara. She charges ridiculous amounts of money for a permit. The board is not considering replacing. She is terrible to deal with and should be fired, especially after her comments last year. About the five acres and how she knew the owner was going to level all of the trees. She laughed about it. Stories from neighbors include Barbara cancels appointments, causing delays in projects and costing homeowners more money. Now she wants to hire an assistant because she can't do the job, which will cost us even more money in permit fees. Developers also do not want to deal with her, which makes getting new projects attracted to our village difficult, hence the storage facility. Why is this person still employed by us? I don't want to pay her salary through you. If not, please join us tomorrow night at Village Hall and let your voice be heard. We need as many people as we. My words to that would just be, I think if Ms. Detner has been around for twenty, almost twenty years, the only way the village is going to improve, in my opinion, is change. So if somebody is here for twenty years, nothing has changed, then nothing has changed, then we, you as the board, need to do something about it. A lot of residents, from what I've heard, don't want to do repairs to their home, and that's going to make the village worse. So we need, you need to think very hard about this. I think the residents would appreciate it. And also, I just feel like you need to stick up for the residents. We all learned from sixteen oh one that everybody was siding, not, you weren't siding with the owner of that property, but I, as a resident, felt unheard. I know I wasn't because I did meet with Courtney and Kelly and our President Bo, trustee Thomas and Eugene. I was one of the neighbors. So I know you listen to us and I appreciate the meeting. I don't think that would have happened last year with the, with the board that's here. So I personally appreciate it. But I just think it's time to start listening to the residents. We pay our taxes here. We want to keep our homes up. And if we don't want to do that because we have a four hundred dollar permit fee for a deck or a roof or whatever, whatever the case may be, then things are just going to fall apart, and I don't think we want that. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. See, and any other public comments, gentlemen? All right, we will go from public comments to the trustee reports of roads, parks, and streets. Trustee McNally, please.
Um, something I just want to make people aware of, that there's a island, a Deer Lane, that's on the cul-de-sac portion of Deer Lane. So it will be north of Joy. It's in very, it's in disrepair. It's not maintained well. Uh, there's a lot of dead vegetation in it, and the tippers are falling apart. Ever speaking with the engineer and with Kyle, uh, our thought is that we remove it and blacktop it, and we can make that happen when we do road, uh, repairs later this year. Um, I went out and spoke to the neighbors who involved, and they were thrilled that it's gone and were thinking about moving and taking it out. Uh, they said that it causes problems with snow plowing. It kind of creates, you know, that, that that snow, uh, limiting their ability to pull it out of the driveway. Uh, and it's, and it's an eyesore, so they would like nothing more than to see it, uh, see it removed. They don't see it being something that slows down drivers. And, uh, so after speaking to the neighbors, making sure that if we did this, that they wouldn't have an issue afterwards, and they seem very much, uh, happy to hear it.
Is that on the Deer Creek side of Deer Lane or the original, but the older part?
Original.
And I had someone, uh, that was actually already budgeted for that industry program, so it won't be an additional cost.
That's part of the street program that we just approved.
And then another thing is I had another resident contacting me about some crumbling roadside of the road and, uh, old rumble. She, this person provided the pins, which were shared with the Public Works Department, and they will take care of it. It looks like, uh, heavy equipment or garbage trucks or people taking kind of shortcuts have graded some ruts on the side of the road and, uh, Public Works is aware. I'll take care of it. That's all I have.
Actually, if I can add on to that, we had a resident ask a couple of weeks ago about some large boulders that were placed on the shoulder on Joy Lane on its way out to Randall Road, asking one, why they were there, and was it a hindrance to the police or fire? Um, if you're listening, uh, according to police and fire, it is not a hindrance for them to get by in that area. And what I understood from Public Works was because people were riding over on that shoulder, it just kept smashing out the rocks and pushing it out, and so the boulders were put up there specifically to stop people from doing that, and it was effective, and it's a bunch of big rocks. So, thank you.
And also, just for the record, there is a natural spring, right, at that point? So people in the early mornings, they don't want to wait because it backs it up to be able to turn light. So they were just running over it, and it was always wet and muddy, and it just run it out that neighbor's, uh, yard. I think it was a good solution.
Thank you. Trustee McNally, did you have more to report?
No, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Uh, trustee Hall for Finance, stay on the side.
Uh, no official report, just, uh, I'm going to be doing some legwork for the next meeting and determining where have the majority of the water main breaks been? And, uh, working with Eugene to, uh, look about what we can afford and not as far as replacing what. Is it Hillcrest? Is it Windmore? We had a fairly large one last week in Windmore.
Both spots.
Both. Well, I don't think we could swing both financially, but, uh, I don't know, which one do you think is, uh, the worst?
Recently, Windmore, but when the, when the ground gets cold, Hillcrest becomes a problem because it's, it's shallow. It's like only five feet deep. And then it's on Pete, so it shakes a lot. When truck, big trucks go by, you can feel the ground shaking. So I'd say Hillcrest and then Windmore. But try to swing both lakes.
And, and Jeff, can you add anything about what has already been, uh, engineering studies up?
Yes, so basically is we've way back, I want to say it was maybe like five years ago. Anyway, so originally his plan was to do kind of like preliminary cost estimation and plan, at least as far as uh, basically replacing all problem areas that we've actually had. So I actually have a pretty good list on everything that we can talk about. And cost-wise, at least as far as the bottom locations that Kyle said, at least as far as water main break locations. And then it is, once it started getting more towards nailing it down, trying to figure out what the village could afford, is that's kind of when you focus on Hillcrest, getting plans together, locationalized specifications and all that, but everything else has kind of been preliminary plans.
Windmore will be cheaper than Hillcrest. For one, it's a shorter span, but also there's not where we could put it. There's no utilities in the easement. Hillcrest is going to be kind of a problem because we have the existing water main on one side, we have the sewer main on the other side with a bunch of fiber optics that are coming in and Comcast, Nycore and all that.
What side of Hillcrest do we?
Sewer main's on the north side, water main's on the south side.
How about Windmore?
It's just water main and that's on the east side, yeah. Well, it crosses, it crosses like just below halfway down the hill where the pool, the hill where the pool is, it crosses to the, uh, east side.
So it would be from the top of Windmore to where?
It would be actually, it would be, there's a pressure reducing valve that was installed back in two thousand thirteen. Two thousand fourteen. So if you're looking at the pool and you're on Windmore, it's to, basically to the edge where that zero, whatever you call that, the beach part of the pool where it goes from zero depth in, it's about even with that if you're looking directly at the pool. So we tie into that pressure reducing valve and then replace the, what's there. Down to Willow.
Why don't we have you meet up with Kyle and Jeff and get that list of the area, the problem areas that we wanted to look at? And we'll figure out Hillcrest, Windmore, see if there's some we'll take a little, from your standpoint, we'll look at financing with you and Eugene to see what we can start making a plan for moving forward.
See what we can afford. Yeah.
Yeah, but I know some of the money we had that we were looking to pushing, putting towards it are now going towards the culverts. So, yeah. All right, um, and any more from finance that's done?
When are we going to start the culvert? John, you go.
Uh, I have that into the Army Corps and they're currently reviewing it. And I followed up with them this morning and I haven't heard that as far as the process.
You think we'll get it done this year?
Hopefully. You know, all the pens permit wise, subduising, every plan wise, and everything's all set, so. Just trying to, uh, navigate the, uh, our internal agencies and my approval.
But we're so easy. All right.
That's it for me.
Uh, trustee McGuire, Water and Sewer?
I'm, I'll give you the water main break though report.
Right, thank you. Uh, trustee Diatley, Police and Public Safety?
Well, you both have chiefs report in your, uh, report. Um, I point out the traffic study in there the chief did on Lompas. Some good information in there. Acorn, I'm sorry, I'm looking for one. Um, so again, um, National Night Out tomorrow night, as you mentioned. Uh, one thing I feel I have to address, and I'm, I'm sorry, pisses me off. Um, and I quote, "What the hell is wrong with the Sleepy Hollow Police Department?" Okay, that was a post that was put out there on some page. And where this comes from is this comes from the drag racing on Randall Road and on the other side in the industrial park. That is Elgin jurisdiction. We fight this every year, folks. What I would like to caution you is don't be a keyboard warrior, okay? Call the chief. Contact me. We'll try to get you the right information. Instead, there's over a hundred comments of people saying the Sleepy Hollow Police Department is not doing their job. I'm sorry, I take offense to that. I support this chief a hundred and fifty percent. I support the officers a hundred and fifty percent. They bust their butts for us every day. So I'm sorry, it just really made me mad, and I'm sorry, people, if you're going to throw something out there, get the information. We said we fight this every year. And most, I hear the drag racing going on too. I live on Jamestown. I hear it every weekend. Call the city of Elgin. Because now, will they go out and do anything? Maybe, maybe not. I have no control over that.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
So if we call the Sleepy Hollow Police Department about Randall, do they dispatch us then to Elgin or do we have to call Elgin directly?
So if we get dispatched for it, we'll go out there. But we'll dis, we'll disposition it out on the computer, basically saying it's west of Randall Road, it's outside of our jurisdiction. Um, and then we have notified Elgin. I've made calls to the chief and, and the traffic unit. They're aware of it. Um, it's not as, as bad as it used to be, but they're aware.
Thank you. They're drag racing on Higgins too.
Oh, yeah.
Can hear that loud and clear now.
Chief.
I have, you're saying, a small group. Why don't you do a little piece in the next newsletter on that? So that people see it. It's probably going to reach more people than talking about it here at the meeting.
So I just wanted to address it because, Courtney, um, just wanted to address it because it does, it, you know, uh, the men and women in our police department work very hard for us, and I appreciate what they do. So when I see statements like that that are so far off base, um, it really bugs me. So I'm very passionate about that. I'm very passionate about the board and the town itself, so, uh, I don't have anything further, Chief, you?
Um, just, we do listen. We, I hear, I, I look at the, the Facebook stuff. I try not to get involved in it. I try and stay out of it. Uh, unless there's information out there that I believe is dangerous or is pointing people in a dangerous direction, then I'll kind of interject and then just back out. I, I don't want to get into the back and forths because that's not productive nor healthy. Um, where the Acorn traffic study came from was Facebook. There was people posting on it, that there was people speeding up and down Acorn. So I just went out, we had, I had Kyle mount the, the, the mount for me. We did a traffic study in both directions just to see if there was a problem out there. So I do pay attention to it. We do listen. Um, but there are certain things that, um, we just simply can't control. And, and drag racing is one of those things, and, and attorney shooting realizes these groups, it's not just one group. They move all over the place. They'll be in Hockman Estates, they'll be in Elgin, they'll be in Schaumburg, they're all over the place and trying to, to, it's like herding cats, trying to find them, and if you do find them, they run. Um, and, you know, quite honestly.
It's not half-hasser. They know what they're doing, and when they, they find out the police are out, they scatter, and then they just go to a different location for a while. So it's really, really hard to fight that. Nothing further.
Thank you. Uh, actually, if I could add on, uh, with respect to Facebook and police instances, um, there were some critiques and criticisms of the village, the village board not addressing the TikTok kickin' I was going to say shenanigans, but that's an understatement. Um, that was a police matter that the chief and the sergeant Diori needed to address. It was not anything overseen with the village, and we needed to let them conduct their investigation. So my apologies for that, but I do stand by the fact that that was something for the chief to address with Facebook and the before that he has with the residents. We, we had, I had spoken with the, the residents where it had occurred, but it was in the chief's hands, and I didn't want to overstep on that one.
And I reiterated, uh, it's called today by the Daily Herald because they've wanted to get some information because it's been happening. Um, and they asked me to support my position that I put out there on Facebook that if we locate the subjects doing it, that I was planning on charging them with a felony, and I reiterated again, that is absolutely my position. If we find out who did it on our own, our position is I will look for mob action, um, charges and charging with a felony. They commit on their own, we'll talk and I'll work with them. Uh, but if they don't, I have no problem charging them with a felony. So I want to make sure I'm clear on that. I, there's, I don't waver.
And it's, it's, it has escalated so horribly with people being scared, people already threatening to shoot. Guys, please, please do your research on what the laws are of Illinois. Stuff that's on Facebook is not always accurate. We don't want anybody to come to harm. I know it's, I can't even imagine, but it's got to be terrifying for somebody to be kicking at the door. Talk to your kids, help explain to them or grandkids or whomever that how dangerous this could be. And if there's any information you can give to the chief or the, the residents who are affected by this, please let us know. So we'll let them know.
We, we had two in one evening in our town. So I mean, it's not, it's not an epidemic, it's, it's, but for the people that it's happening to, it's unsettling. Absolutely unsettling.
And it's been happening outside of Sleepy Hollow?
Oh, it's, it's a phenomenon that's going on throughout the suburbs and, you know, again, it's when you talk to most police departments, it's local. Um, I'm relatively confident these are local kids that did it.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to trustee Schatzberger for Buildings and Environment, please.
Um, I have, uh, spoken to a couple of residents that have concerns, um, on some drainage issues, uh, one of them being on timber lane, or timber. Um, there is a drainage easement that looks like it has not been maintained for years. Um, and I do know that it is the residents' responsibility to take care of this, but because of the the way that this particular drainage easement is looking, I would like to find out if there is a way that maybe Public Works and I would even be willing to go out and help if we could get it cleaned up and then let the two neighbors
and maintain.
Know that it's their responsibility to maintain it going forward.
Why don't you talk with Kyle this week?
Okay.
And kind of let know, I think this is an area we've discussed at a previous time too.
What side, what side of the street, if you're going up the hill, what side of the?
It is on the west side. I'm sorry, the east side of the street.
Because we do, we get the leaves every fall. There's a.
I have photos I can share with you.
And then where, if it's on, if you're looking at the hill, it's on the left side where it cross, it crosses to the east side or, yeah, east side. That needs to be replaced. Um, so I, we're talking about maybe putting some box culverts in there because the two drain, the two culverts there pretty rotten, so.
Okay.
As far as fixing the concrete, because the concrete's buckle because it's old. I mean, it's, I mean, it's really expensive to do, so. Uh, I, if it's just leaf debris, we'll try to get it in the fall. And, uh, because usually we do the one side, the other side just leaves usually just washes out, but we can make a conscious effort to do the, the west side. If, if it's their driveway culvert though, I don't want to set precedent.
No, it's not the driveway at all. It's coming from the hill off of Hilltop. Coming down to timber.
They're coming in from several plug?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I can show you the.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I'd like to see.
Easier to.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Because it was kind of and then I went out there after it rained and there was like no water going through the culvert, so. Um, and then we have another, um, I spoke with, uh, some of the residents on Twin Gale and Hilltop. I spoke with uh some of the residents on Twin Gale and Hilltop. Um concerning some issues that we have with drainage not going all the way down the swale. Um the one homeowner is kind of concerned, they have an invisible fence. Wanting to know, it shouldn't be in easement, so hopefully it won't be effective. Um but there are also some trees that are growing up um against the utility boxes that are there. Um so the trees need to be cut down.
Okay, so their concerns are the electric fence and they, they don't care about the tree, like they're they're.
Well, they just, they understand the trees need to come down. Um they're just concerned if we are going to affect, if we cut, how we're going to affect their. Invisible fence, which it shouldn't have worked.
They would have to. When we do any digging in anyone's yard, we call USIC. The homeowner's responsible for marking their invisible fence and take the collar off the dog. Walk the line, put white flags, marking the fence.
Okay.
Um I will say this, so if it's that, you're talking about the property behind the houses on Hilltop and Gale Lane, like in back there. As far as trees, I'm concerned, and I've talked with Bill Cannelli about this, we have a lot of those properties and. There's really no way for us to get back there to maintain it, it's, it's too narrow to get a big truck in there and then half the time it's too wet, so. I think you're gonna have to either, if they want the trees down, they're gonna have to take the trees down themselves.
Okay, is a permit gonna be needed or can they just take the trees down?
I'd vote on allowing them to take the trees down and build property. That's up to you guys, though.
Okay.
Is this gonna be something for like, if if, so you think we have to do some grading back there?
I think so. It looks like, like over the years, people are probably trying to build up.
Mm-hmm.
And so where the swale used to go down, it doesn't any longer, it's.
Are we gonna wanna approve Hines Engineering to survey before anything?
No, not yet, let's, why don't, why don't you, Kyle and I sit down and talk, I think this is a common one that we've discussed before. Um it's kind of a dispute between the two residents, but they can maybe use some help with adjusting grading back there. But let's, yeah, we'll set up a meeting this week so we can discuss that one and then the timber one.
Okay, and then as far as um getting rid of those trees that are back against the utility. That I'd like to find out if the board is okay with me reaching out to the resident. One of the residents has volunteered to remove them, if the board is okay with it.
I know one of them is an invasive honeysuckle, so from that standpoint, that could go without it being an issue, but. Let's find out what they are, do you, the three of us sit and meet and then we can just bring a motion to the board, to the board, that could be discussed.
Okay, I have photos of that as well. Okay, that's all I've got.
Alright. Uh and then building and zoning, uh trustee Thomas, and I understand that uh Barb also wanted to add in some things under. Building and zoning, so trustee Thomas, please.
Um, just a couple of things, I was with trustee Schatzberger at the one residence that we looked at that drainage. Can, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Okay, the, the main thing that I wanna talk about is um the issue. That trustee Schatzberger and I were out looking at that drainage uh thing that on timber. I think something also needs to be looked at, Kyle, you brought up about the Hilltop, if it was village property. Their driveway, a large portion of it is village property. So that's where some of these, I think, issues have come in, so I think that needs to be looked at at some point. And then I also want to um. Piggyback on trustee Diatley's comment um about, it really is upsetting to me. That I understand we cannot stop social media. But as I've asked people that I've spoken with, if they would just call. Some of the trustees and get the facts straight, or call Eugene and get the facts before people start posting. Incorrect information and call the chief or call President Bo or. You know, so we can get the facts straight before this stuff is put out. Because all it does is stir the pot with many residents. And it just, we spend time, I, I, I can't tell you the amount of time I've spent. And I know other trustees are involved as well, of trying to put out fires. For things that the facts are not correct that are put out there, and I know we cannot. You know, fix social media and what people put out there, but it would be helpful to this board. If we had people getting the facts straight before they started putting the information that they're putting out. So that's all I really have to say on this.
Thank you, trustee Thomas. Barb, did you have something you needed in?
Uh yes, thank you very much for letting me have the time. Uh first, I just wanted to publicly thank you for the donation to both hand. Bill loved working for this community, he loved coming to visit, sorry I didn't want to cry. As I have love working for this community and trying to do an outstanding job for everybody. Unfortunately, things get twisted and not necessarily all the facts. There are always two sides to the story, so anyway, I'm sorry if I've offended anybody because it's never been my invention. And then um, as was mentioned about the number of permits, right now there are only a hundred six permits that have been issued through today. And I was asked about uh going electronic. I've been starting to look and research at permitting um software that would be required, which I'm seeing. Upwards of five thousand dollars a month, or I'm saying a month, a year. Or that type of product to go electronic, um right now, we don't have a computer and the, the. Building department, so it's a little hard to be electronic when you don't have a computer, but um so anyway. I'd just like to take it kind of as an I O U for probably uh the. Proceed of next month, they have something together for you folks who have an idea of what the cost may be to try and go electronic with it. Um and then lastly, um as I mentioned, I have. Hi guys. It's always been an honor to work for this community and I felt, I take an ownership of everything that's been done here. I have tried everything to work within the code to help people achieve what they wanted to do. And it's a great regret that I submitted my resignation effective. In this X D notification and then the residents could have their say as to what. I did not request any of these positions that were asked for. And so I get a little frustrated when things are twisted and said that are not true. I don't know of any other community resident or 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 inspector that would go out. After being told the inspection was at eleven o'clock and then it gets moved to one o'clock, then it gets moved to three o'clock, then it gets moved to five o'clock. And then it gets moved to six o'clock, so whatever show up without slapping and not approved and charging a reinspection fee. No reinspection fees get charged in this town unless it's out there for the third time for the very same sub item. And I haven't had a paycheck this year. And so everything I've been doing in this town is basically non-grads, it's been pay the cost of paying an employee. Who is a licensed plumbing inspector and so you will be losing your license plumbing inspector as well. And so you will need to add that to your RFP and I will be more than happy to work with you to come up with an accurate one. Because you'll need to have somebody that can do the filing, that can do the issuance of the permits, the prime reviews and everything like that. And I was delighted to help you with that, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Barb, there's a lot there and I'll talk to your committee, but thank you. Actually, I'm gonna add on to that, um thank you for your time and service here, I'm sorry that this is where it has come to. Um I would just like to add on with what trustee Diatley and trustee Thomas have indicated. Over this weekend, there was a lot of discussion on social media about uh Barb Jetmar and her performance here. And I understand that people's homes are their castles and they're take a lot of pride and a lot of protection with it. But the language that was used by residents to describe one of our own, even with anger. Was disappointing, it, that's, it's such an understatement, I just felt so much of it felt so mean spirited. And what I really was upset about is a lot of the accusations that were being tossed around there were assumptions. Based on people not having all of the information and they were simply wrong. And they drove up a frenzy with people. Creating a lot of hurt feelings on all sides and. There are things that we are going to have to do on the board, we are going to try our best to be open and transparent with everything. But there are some things that we have to discuss in executive session, that unfortunately have to be privileged until we can be done with the matter. And the leaps of logic that some people applied. Are just infuriating and it was har- harmful to the village, it put us back. We had to spend a lot of time dealing with other residents who are upset, not understanding what was going on. And it, it really can be a real, I mean, it's part of the job and I know that. But guys, please know that words have constant, words have meaning and they have consequences. And especially if you don't know the right ones or all of the facts, so, thank you, Barb. I'm sorry that it got, that it's, what has happened has happened and everything has transpired in this manner. But I appreciate your service and for working with us through all of this and through your difficult times and your grief. Thank you. Alright, uh no more trustee reports, we're living in our old business, nothing under old business. Moving on to new business, roads, I have some requests from uh Public Works Department. Kyle, do you wanna address this or would you like me to introduce these?
Up to you.
Okay, um go ahead on the first item, you wanted to.
Yeah, so we um, I, I don't know, many of you have probably seen, we have a Polaris six by six. It's got six wheels, I don't know, it's six by six, but we got that free from the government, it's two thousand one. It is starting to die on us, we'll take it out, it'll run for an hour and then die, and I have to tow it back to the shop. It's gotten to the point where I don't wanna put any more money into it. Um the dealership that services Polaris notified me five years ago that they no longer make the Polaris Ranger six by six. They make a Polaris Ranger, but it's got four tires. Um so it's gotten to the point where I don't wanna put any more money into it and I am seeking board approval to purchase a Kawasaki Mule. For eleven thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars. We do have this ending five-year capital fund. And we use this, it's a utility vehicle, so it's side by side, however you wanna describe it. We use it for a lot of things, it's, it's been instrumental to us, it's better than driving a four fifty around or two fifty around. To go water plants, go do trimming, go do weed lipping around town, paint fire hydrants, so we use it for all the small. Task and sometimes bigger task, um that tree that came down on timber, we used it to drag the brush. About two thousand feet from the backyard to the street because we couldn't get the chipper close enough. Instead of dragging it by hand and take, it would take us five hours to do, it took us an hour, so.
You did that one in Deer last year too.
Yes, yeah.
Do I have a motion from the trustees to approve the purchase of a Kawasaki Mule four oh one, you said?
Four zero one zero four by four.
Four zero one zero four by four. In the amount, what, eh, yeah, in the amount. Of eleven thousand nine hundred fifty-eight dollars and fifty cents, which would come from the five-year capital investment fund. Did you have something to say, trustee Cannelli?
Um I was gonna say so who?
Yeah, I have a second.
Second.
Alright, moved by Cannelli, seconded by Hoff, uh comments, questions, discussion?
It's about six, six thousand dollars less than what we budgeted.
Only thing I wanted to ask Kyle, did we get a trade-in value on the old one at all? Get anything?
They don't want it.
They don't want it, no.
We don't, the issue is getting rid of what we have, there's, we haven't found a title. And I don't believe the military has titles for their vehicles, we got that, it was the ARPA or whatever. Um I haven't been able to locate a file, the chief hasn't been able to locate a file, Eugene can't find a, a title, so. Bill Cannelli actually brought up a good point, maybe carts for kids, something like that.
Not that they're gonna use it.
So getting rid of it is, I don't know if anyone's gonna buy it. It's, it's probably worth, it's maybe worth five hundred dollars.
In a donation, that doesn't benefit a municipality, no.
And they simply can't be serviced, we have, we have a sister to it and it does the same thing and you just can't service them anymore, they won't support them. But I can go back through the government and try and get another one, um those are only available law enforcement, though not through uh public works.
So this was in the capital improvement fund, it's less than what we had budgeted for it. And it's to the point that it's no longer serviceable and you guys, this is a, something that you guys use fairly regularly in order to maneuver around.
Touch every day.
That's what I was gonna say, I know I've C J's on it quite a lot, it's one of those necessary ones. Um, and the other comments, questions, discussion?
They have a winch on the front of it.
We can, I'm under budget. No, it doesn't matter, have a winch, so we can add it on in, in the future.
If you could, you know, yank the mowers out of the ditch, we could start to with that, I mean, it's a lot of uses for this, yeah.
Anything else? Alright, can we roll call vote, please? Trustee McGuire?
Aye.
Trustee Thomas?
Aye.
Trustee Schatzberger?
Aye.
Trustee Diatley?
Aye.
Trustee Cannelli?
Aye.
Trustee Hoff?
Aye.
All affirmative, no negative, motion passes, thank you. Alright, so now, shocking, uh we'd like a motion to dispose of the two thousand one Polaris Ranger six by six. Have a motion?
Second.
Moved by Cannelli, seconded by McGuire. Any further comments, questions or discussion about the disposal?
I don't plan on disposing it.
Well, that's a great question, if you guys got ideas, let me know.
Eugene seems to be the master of finding ways for this.
What's that? We probably put in junk deals and junk deals. List, and he listed his uh title.
Yeah.
And, you know, we might be able to get a dollar or two for it.
Yeah.
Then we got ten thousand dollars for a broken down playground.
Playground.
Alright.
So worst came to worst, is there like a, a old yard, a junkyard that sells?
Scrapyard.
What are you, are you? Open your trailer in there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Buried under some garbage.
Uh so that was Cannelli and then McGuire, yep. Alright, trustee Thomas?
Aye.
Uh trustee Diatley?
Aye.
Trustee Schatzberger?
Aye.
Trustee Hoff?
Aye.
Trustee Cannelli?
Aye.
Trustee McGuire?
Aye.
All approved, all affirmative, no negative, the motion passes. Alright, now we're on to item number three, the approval of using RNG tree service for removing two dead oaks at eleven oh five Crane Drive. For two thousand dollars, one dead oak at ten twenty-nine Bo Bremel Drive for fifteen hundred dollars, one dead poplar at nine twenty-nine Willow. Between eighteen hundred and, oh no, that's your total, okay, eighteen hundred totaling then fifty-three hundred?
Uh you, uh add three oh five Sharon Drive for eighteen hundred dollars on there too.
Three oh five, um can I add two of some salary now?
What, the package has um.
It's an attack, okay. Alright, it's not on the.
Agenda has a mistake, did, did that include each of the items?
It missed, it was omitting one. Do it, do not include. Do include the motion, or you said do include it in? Uh so, one dead poplar at nine twenty-nine Willow, in the amount of eighteen hundred and then. One at three oh, three oh five Deer Lane in the amount of eighteen hundred.
Sharon Drive. Three oh five Sharon.
Thank you. Three oh five Sharon Drive in the amount of eighteen hundred.
Yeah, bring, the total would be for that, for all those trees would be seven thousand one hundred dollars.
Do I have a motion? Moved by McGuire, seconded by.
I'll second.
Schatzberger? Comments, questions, discussion?
Have you used this service before?
Yeah.
And do we, we have other quotes? And do we, we have other quotes?
Yeah, I had, uh, Danny's Tree Service came out. They were nine grand for the, for the same scope of work and then, uh, red oak. There was payment issues with them. They wanted, they want to check right then on the spot and for us, we can't do it until the warrants are approved, so. They don't want to do it for us.
Are they taking stumps up?
Yeah. The only rea- the reason I'm getting a contractor for these, for one, they're massive trees. Two, I can't take them down safely, safely myself just because of the proximity to the road and the houses. If I had an open field to flop it, we would do it, obviously, but they're gonna need a bucket truck. We're actually gonna assist them with traffic. Bold Brown was gonna be pretty tricky because it's right there on the hill. Same with Crane Drive. Um, that's why I'm contracting them out.
Just to clarify, these are on village property?
They're in our, yeah, within the road easement, yeah.
Okay.
So it's, the account it will come from is the general fund, uh, contractual services, uh, road maintenance.
Yeah, we, uh, Kyle spoke to me about this before. We discussed if there are other options. I mean, to me, sometimes a dead tree isn't actually useless or dead, serves other purposes, but in this case, they've been dead for many years. They are close to either houses, utility lines or roads, so they're posing a public safety issue. And because they've been dead for a couple of years now and we've had these mega windstorms coming in and we've been losing larger and larger branches off of trees. I even asked if we could wait even a month just to see if we could find some other options, but one of the ones has been swaying a lot recently and it just looks like this is the time to get it done and move forward. Um, alright, any further discussion, folks? Roll call vote, please. Uh, trustee Canelli?
Aye.
Trustee Hoff?
Aye.
Trustee McGuire?
Aye.
Trustee Thomas?
Aye.
Trustee Diatley?
Aye.
Trustee Schatzberger?
Aye.
Uh, all, all affirma- all affirmative, no negative. The motion passes. Thank you. And now on to village property approval of using RNG tree service for removing a large hanging broken limb behind eleven forty-four Gale Lane in the amount of five hundred dollars. Do you have a motion?
Is that private property or is it the greenway?
You got a motion first.
Uh, motion by Canelli, seconded by Schatzberger. Comments, questions, discussion? Trustee Hoff?
Whose property is it now?
Ours.
Okay.
And it's falling into the guy's yard. It's too high up for me to reach with a pole saw, so we'd have to climb it, but I'm not gonna have my guys go up there with a chainsaw.
You do that. No, I'm just kidding.
I want to keep that award going.
If you like the safety award. Alright. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please. Trustee Diatley?
Aye.
Trustee Thomas?
Aye.
Trustee McGuire?
Aye.
Trustee Hoff?
Aye.
Trustee Canelli?
Aye.
Trustee Schatzberger?
Aye.
All affirmative, no negative. Motion passes. Thank you, Kyle. Anything else for public works tonight?
That's all I got.
Alright, thank you. Uh, we're moving on to item C, discussion and approval of motion to amend Title III Business and Licensing Regulations to include Chapter twelve Mobile Food Vendors. This is the one we discussed last week. We were still working on getting some goals together, so apologies for the short notice on this, but it's still covering most of what we had discussed already. Um, primarily that we need to figure out how many, if we want to limit the number of trucks as well as the, um, the food hours and then the distance from which they can conduct business. So, going on, it's gonna be on here.
What do you mean by distance?
The, uh, some towns, uh, some other jurisdictions would limit how close a food truck can be to an established restaurant. So, you can consider adding, uh, a clause that would say, um, and, and what, uh, what I drafted, I put in one thousand feet because that would be the, the distance to your one restaurant across that Spring Hill Meadows Shopping Center. It's about a thousand feet and you, you may have another restaurant locating in that vicinity as well and you don't want to, well, maybe you do. You should consider whether a food truck ought to be parked in front of your restaurant or not, or some distance away.
No, are you talking about their own food truck or somebody else's food truck?
Yeah, I think the main thing for this that I was taking away from it is thinking of the businesses we already have here that are in the strip mall, particularly restaurants. We have, anybody that's serving food, we have Dunkin' Donuts. We have East Level Air Cruise and we have obvious. Yeah. Um, so from that standpoint, those are over a thousand feet. It's actually, I measured it out. Uh, there was one discussion about potentially a food truck going over to the Verlo parking lot, so I wanted to check distance there. It's about two thousand feet from Verlo to ten twenty-three, which is the closest strip mall store. Uh, in fact, even if somebody were in Verlo's parking lot at the thousand feet and say sixteen oh one West Main turned into a restaurant, that I think is about nine hundred and sixty-six feet. So, or no, it's just over a thousand feet. So any of the locations within Sleepy Hollow proper, a food truck would probably be able to go without running into that conflict. Which is kind of what I was thinking. We want it more accessible so that since we don't have so many public spaces, that was the only area that would be in conflict. Um, does that make sense?
No, that's the idea behind it, to, to make sure there's some separation.
We had discussed a limit on the number of trucks. We'd suggested potentially two for private, five for commercial. Um, do we still want to stand by that? I have five commercial events, sort of like the, the Fourth of July or some of the service club is putting out, they have the option to have more food trucks.
I think so, that's there.
That's fair.
Yeah, so we're gonna, and actually, we did look into it, um, there are sometimes people have block parties or private residence parties which they hire caterers. If the caterer comes with their own truck and it's on private property and they're not selling it, that's not really what we're getting at here. So the two and the five really is a restriction for a food truck coming in to vend and sell and sell their, their way of goods. Uh, so aside from that, and then I think the only other one that was really that we needed to pay attention to was the hours. I was somebody having suggestions or preferences, um. I was thinking most food trucks generally, it's a lunchtime thing or a dinner, so giving them some time to set up, get their prep, maybe start at ten AM. Probably end by, I was thinking no later than eight PM after dinner, but
I was thinking nine. I think nine's there.
I agree with, uh, trustee McGuire that nine o'clock because some of the
Games.
Some games or if you have a block party, you know, people are still eating that can't maybe get there.
Well, block parties would be separate. That's a private residence, so this would just be where the food trucks would be operating in uh, the parking lot here with the soccer fields. If the Fourth of July, Halloween, which that would fall under their license, the event licensing. So that they'd be covered in that. So really it'd be an individual truck coming and operating in Sleepy Hollow on a public space.
Well, block party last year, the truck was on the street. This year was a little bit different, but only because there was vending issues.
Right, but that should be part of the block party approval process. Correct, and my only concern going too late at night would be if it's dark and you got kids running to an ice cream truck or something like that, that would be a concern because let's face it, we don't have a lot of lights in town. So that would be my only concern on keeping it too late. Disordinance is geared towards trucks selling food products.
Right.
Um, I, I, in a, a, a block party event, maybe they're still selling, but that should that could be handled through the block party approval process. Sure. Where they're gonna be, what the hours will be and so on, because you'll have safety concern even with the blocked off street if a food truck's gonna be there. And I can, we can just change the form, the current block party approval form and add some of those contingencies.
Right.
I think nine o'clock would be a good time.
Because if it's gonna be on the street, chances are the streets shut down.
Right, and, and I mean, if you have concerns, you, you could make it less to, for a block party. Yeah, depending on time of year. Obviously, in the summertime, nine o'clock would be okay, whereas if it was in October, that might not be.
Yeah, and we're only letting this go until the end of October, so, uh, Eugene mentioned, why don't we just say till dusk? How legally, how difficult is that one?
That's the nine.
Sunset. Sunset's a published data every day.
So dusk sounds good. Then we start addressing the safety element. You have the later days in the summertime when it gets okay, so selling until dusk. So in the very
That goes, that goes even, like, right now, it's before eight o'clock, right?
It's eight fifty-five now.
Is that what it is right now? Trying to look on the weather app right now.
But do we want people out going to a food truck in the vil- like, in the village?
Just, just, that's like, what, what circumstances? Like, we're not just having a food truck like on a random street, right? Because I don't think we should do that. Like, just
Well, it's not a, so
About a random street?
Say that again?
So we're not just gonna have a food truck that's like, hey, on this random Wednesday, I want to be on like Acorn. You know, or, you know, we're, I'm gonna stop up on Locust.
It's unlikely.
It's unlikely, but I mean, I don't think that's what we're intending for the food trucks.
I don't think so, yeah.
Sunset tomorrow is at eight oh six.
Okay, so yeah, it's right around eight o'clock now and we're at beginning of August.
Trustee Hoff, did you have something?
I think it just should be for the events. I would be very afraid of that as well, too.
Yeah.
That somebody figures it out, they just start setting up, but they would have to go through the process. And we would know about it.
But if it's quoted that way, then you can't say no, I guess.
Well, I think we have, we had the residents just recently who have a food, who have a restaurant establishment or a food business and they wanted access to be able to use their, their trucks, so this would enable that. Uh, especially the licensing instead of waiting to do the ordinance.
But they wanted to do it at Verlo, which is totally fine. I wouldn't want it set up in front of my house. That makes sense. You know what I mean?
So do we
Unless, unless we got a special use like such as a black party.
Well, the, the locations are limited to public parking lots, public parks or open spaces in the village. They can't, they can't deter traffic. They can't be stopping in the middle of the street to deter traffic. So those are kind of, and actually the truck can't just be moving around. It needs to be at a, a location and then issued from there, so we're looking at Seventeen Oak Park. Um,
Yeah, what about ice cream trucks?
Yeah, I say no ice cream trucks. Well, one, we don't have sidewalks.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Do we allow ice cream trucks now?
No.
Do you shoe them out of the village when you see them?
I have, in the four plus years I've been here, I've not seen an ice cream truck drive through Sleepy.
They know, now it's
I have.
Um.
But yeah, we don't go looking for ice cream trucks.
If you do one call, the police.
But that was a social media thing where people were on social media complaining about there's no ice cream trucks because we're unfavorable to our ice cream trucks. Yeah, it was, it took, it took a whole life of its own, so.
I think, I think safety issues with kids, you know, it's like we got kids already running in streets.
Well, we can, we can narrow this more. I mean, this is, we're also concerned this is kind of a pilot program to get this set up. We wanted to turn it around quickly so we could help out some of our residents' businesses and also still have it apply for summertime and the last events we have of the summer. Um, so if we want to specifically get rid of ice cream truck or not permit that?
Well, we would change the definition.
Okay.
Like, or just like moving vehicles, I guess, because we have ice cream trucks coming for Fourth of July and stuff like that, that's fine. We don't want them driving around at noon on a Wednesday.
I mean, I don't think they're gonna be very profitable doing that and they can't do, they can't emit any noise, so it
You had them be, have to be at a fixed location.
Yeah.
They're not allowed to be mobile.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, that might be something to consider.
I'm listening. Ice cream or food?
In general, you don't want them to be mobile. If you want them to be, for safety purposes, you want them to be in a fixed location.
No, that, okay, let's focus here, guys. And you're coming in with all sorts of ideas.
Uh, no, like, like, ice cream truck's fine. So say like barbecue in Verlo and then they want like a dessert truck next to it. That, then who cares?
So what would you like on this order?
Welcome to my family. So what are you, okay, but just not driving around, not driving around, right? That's the big thing.
From a fixed locate, even though they're mobile food vendors, when they're in the village, they're gonna operate from a fixed location.
Yeah.
Right.
Not, hey, not driving around.
Right.
Now with that address, our address. Trustee McGuire.
Yeah.
I agree with that one. We have it on there. They, yeah, they come.
And if it's fixed locations only on public properties or, or wouldn't it be allowed for loads of private? Any approved location?
They used to come down.
Be hard to be a city street, a village street, because they're just not.
Let's say public locations and, and approved. So like, if a private property gives permission that way, because I mean, this is literally one of the ones we're trying to help work with, so.
Number four, all sales by food. Any mobile food vendor shall take place only at a location.
So it's a, yeah, thank you. Alright, so we'll take it from ten AM to dusk. Licensee shall be permitted to sell foodstuffs between the hours of ten AM to dusk. Uh, unless they're issued a permit and otherwise issued a permit in connection with it, it shouldn't be no longer than three days in a seven-day period. My only thought is if there's a holiday weekend, do we want to be able to give them a four-day pass or four-day permit or is everybody okay with the three?
Or it's fine if it's a holiday.
Right, what, so Friday evening, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, because of Monday's holiday?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's up to you.
Okay, let's add in or four days on a holiday. Uh, then under number three, sales for any mobile trucks shall not occur at any location within, we'll say a thousand feet. That gives space for all of the public places as well as enables Verlo without being, uh, restricted with the strip mall.
Okay, then real quick, just one more last five.
Yeah.
Dusk is at like four thirty at Halloween.
Back to eight o'clock, folks.
Do eight o'clock.
Chief, is it okay, would you think if we did eight o'clock and then because Halloween will be the main one? Oh, well, no, but Halloween's a, Halloween is a, a service club event, which will have its own license, so they can get past the, the timeframe.
And as long as you have that caveat in there, that's subject to approval, then we can kind of look at it in a case-by-case basis. If somebody proposes something that just simply is not safe, then we can address that.
I like keeping it at dusk, especially with the safety concerns. Let's keep it at dusk. They can go longer when they meet with the chief for the service club permits. And again, it's just a pilot session, so we'll see if there's problems or not. Alright, a thousand feet and then, yeah, and Jenny or trustee McGuire, number four, it reads, all sales by any mobile food vendor shall take place only at a location approved by the village. And in no event shall the sales obstruct or impede vehicular or pedestrian traffic. And that they have to be at such and such locations is number five, so I think that covers that as well. Um, any other comments, questions, discussion from the board? Do I have a motion to?
I think, why don't you let me redraft?
Thank you.
Uh, that'd be my suggestion. If you table it, we'll have a conforming text for the next meeting. If acceptable.
Uh, trustee?
Quite a few changes.
Um, Bill Canelli, uh, brought something up. I didn't want to steal.
Thanks, Dad.
So, I'm assuming that these are sales and there's gonna be sales tax.
Yes, it should be, and it's included here that they have to, uh, uh, register, uh, there's a unit uh, as operating from Sleepy Hollow for the pertinent time.
And, uh, how was that collection process work?
Well, the sales taxes remitted to the state, uh, the state, uh, in its own good time, remits it back to the village. It's there, back to the village. It's several, it's a several month process, about four. It, it used to be four. I'm not sure if they're still needing to uh, staying on task, but, uh,
And, you know, from a positive perspective, if they believe it's very successful, maybe he glows to the point that he takes some of the vacant space in our strip mall.
I did have somebody ask me about serving alcohol with it. I would just say right now, let's keep this where it is. Food, ice cream, let's not make it more complicated than it needs to be at the moment.
I, I, I appreciate that.
Alright, so if I need a motion to table. Can I get a motion to table the[1794.27] Motion to amend Title III. Moved by Schatzberger?
Second.
Seconded by Hop, trust, by trustee Thomas. Uh, comments, questions, discussion?
So the idea of somebody over at Verlo? Unintended consequences, does anything come to mind from a? Police standpoint?
No, the sightlines are pretty good there, there's no issue with them being able to get off the road, there's plenty of parking available, so. I don't really see any problems over there, bros, I, I mean, that's, I, I never say never. Uh, but if something was to come up, then I would bring something to the board to address. But I don't foresee anything at all.
Uh, roll call on the motion to table until, we have a draft of this, of the next meeting, it'll be for August eighteenth. Trustee McGuire?
Aye.
Trustee Canelli?
Aye.
Trustee Hop?
Aye.
Trustee Schatzberger?
Aye.
Trustee Diatley?
Aye.
Trustee Thomas?
Aye.
All affirmative, no negative, motion passes, thank you. Um, moving on to item D, is for an executive session, that being said, some of the. Recent events. We do not necessarily need to go into executive session. Unless anybody would like to make a motion to take a pause and go into executive session at this time. Alright, hearing none, we will move on to item E. Discussion and approval of motion to authorize Eugene Van, the village administrator, to submit an RFP. For building inspector, assistant building code official, and or assistant to zoning officer. Considering the change that just occurred in this meeting. No, we'll stick with this, cause we can, we can add on at the eighteenth meeting as well. To at least start getting the information.
Well, we don't have anybody to be an assistant for, though.
There's also building inspector there. So let me, let's, can I get a motion? For discussion and approval to authorize the village administrator to submit an RFP for building inspector, period. With the motion to, at least be a, to have a discussion.
I'll move.
Moved by McGuire, seconded by Diatley. This would enable us to get an RFP out, at least to get started, I know you guys have been having questions about what the cost would be, and. What, what businesses are out there, this would be a good start, we can then get the. New motion on. The board at the next meeting on the eighteen, with recent changes. And then we can get, we could do that. I think it'd be prudent to see if we can do the RFP now, just so we can start doing our background information and learning about it. But I understand that. The assistant parts will not be a part of it.
That's.
I'd say it'd be good to get the ball rolling, you know, start, start the process and see what's there. But, is, Bart, is your resignation immediate? Sorry.